Good evening, welcome to the Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission for the month of May. Our first order of business tonight, because we have several on vacation, is to elect a chairman to fulfill the chairman and vice chairman's absence. So, councilor, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, sir, Vice Mayor. Obviously, this is just for this evening, and I take nominations for pro temp chairman for this evening. Is there a nomination for that?
Mark Atkins.
Have a nomination for Mark Atkins. Any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous, and back to you for the...
All right, thank you. So, we will call this meeting to order, and the first thing on our agenda tonight is going to be doing a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. So, if you can stand, we'll have you stand, and if you can't, that's okay too. Thank you.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege that we have in this country to convene tonight to discuss our town's business. We ask that you guide our hands, guide our minds, help us to do what is in the best interest of our city and our citizens. At this time, we'd also like to pray a special prayer for one of our local educators, Ms. Shannon Williams. We ask that you keep your hand on her, guide the doctors attending to her, and give her a measure of health as you see fit. Also, watch over our first responders and our military. In Christ's name, amen.
Face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trey and Mark. Moving to the next agenda item, I see no citizens' comments at this time, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we will move on to the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look over them? Councilor, do you?
Yes, in order.
All right. We need a motion for the minutes?
Motion to approve.
And a second, anybody?
Second.
So, a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Whole business, we have a site plan for Shank's Associates. I know this has come up before, 729 Enin Springs Road, Mason Tucker Drive. Owner developer is Vic Lakes Properties Legacy Real Estate Group. Kevin, you have this?
I do. Me tonight, Mitch has had time on vacation. This is a site plan that y'all did look at last month and did defer. This is a site plan for 20 townhouse units. In their resubmitment, they are only asking for approval for the townhouse portion of this, not the commercial part of the building now. That would come back later to look at. And so, they are requesting approval just for the town, the 20 townhouse units. We did review this, and part of the concern last month and reason it got deferred was regarding the architectural elevations and the size of the units. And so, we did receive revised elevations and all, and revised plans. Those elevations, in addition to the elevations, they have four plans. The PUD approval had two different sizes of units, both a little over 1,900 square feet, but they, the square footage just did include the garages. And so, these, some of these units are less than that, but that, not counting the garage, you include the garage, they all, all do exceed the square footage that was approved as part of the PUD. One differences, or I guess a couple of differences. One, the PUD approval did have, they were all two-car garages, and these are, I think 11 units have one car and nine have two-car garages. And then, the PUD approval did have more brick, more, especially on the sides and rear of the, than versus, this has a mix of brick and hardy. One thing that they did that would partially offset the loss of some of the parking with the two-car garage versus the one car, is there are about 16 parking spaces shown within the exterior to the site, outside of just the garages and the driveways to the garages. So, that does, that was not a part of the original PUD approval. So, we had a few comments, standard comments that would remain, and then, the one, there was one grading plan comment. And then, they did, we did receive, number one has been addressed, we did receive that. We would need to keep number two regarding the plat. We have the plat, it has been submitted, it's not been recorded. And then, kind of number three, I just kind of explained with regards to the size of the units. So, we would, obviously, it's up for discussion how you all want to look at the units themselves, one through four under standard, one under grading, and two under staff comments would need to be a part of any approval.
Thank you. Questions by anybody? The ones that questions I've got, I know we talked about this a little bit last month, did I hear you say that some of the footages have been adjusted to include garage space now as part of the approval?
No, they, no, the original PUD approval had, they were, the units were, there were two different sizes, but they were all over 1,900 square footage.
But the square footage, did they then include the garage?
They included the garage space at that time. And so, some of these show a lot smaller square footage, but they don't count the garage. If you count the garage, they're actually a little bit...
Was that normally the way we approved? I thought normally we were doing living space.
I don't know, this, this PUD was probably 10 or 11 years old, so I don't, I don't recall exactly what we were looking at when it was approved. There were some 1,938 square feet, and there were some that were 1,984 square feet. And these are...
Either way, they're going, you take out the garage, they're still going to meet...
Right.
11, 1200 square foot.
On them.
You were, if you take out a two-car garage...
Right.
You're taking out 400 or so feet, correct?
Right.
According to what we've got, the first floor plan, it says living and second floor living, so...
Right.
Looks like total living area on one's 1,949, 1,948, and 1,705.
Correct.
I'm looking at that, and that's without the garage.
Right, that is without the garage, yes.
Okay, that's more, I think that's more what we're wanting.
That's what I saw here, but when I, when I heard him mention the garage being included, I wanted to verify that.
Yes.
Right.
And brick and hardy was something they have gone to instead of the...
It was mostly brick before, right.
Okay.
Of course, there are still quite a bit of brick on the front, the rear is all hardy, and then you have the mix on the sides, what they're proposing.
And 11, what'd you say, 11 with single car and nine with two-car?
Correct.
All right. All right, any other questions? I've asked mine. Do you have a motion?
Well, our concern last time was whether or not we had bedrooms downstairs. We didn't know what the floor plans looked like, and they have brought us floor plans, and they do have the master downstairs, so they would help our older community if that...
Well, that was a big concern of mine as you all...
Right. And so, at least now we have floor plans to see what we're looking at, and we have hardy, which is a cementitious material, which I'm a proponent of it over vinyl.
Right.
A little more durable.
Much preferred.
Yeah.
Much preferred.
Nicer, it is a nice-looking product, which is some of the things we've been trying to get to, so I'm going to step out on a limb, I'm going to vote to approve.
With staff comments?
With staff comments.
You have a motion to approve with staff comments, we have a second.
My second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, to new business, rezoning requests. We have Haare Mohammed, Old Nashville Highway rezoning request from C2 to C5. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a rezoning request on Old Nashville Highway. It's, do it here. It's two separate parcels of land totaling about 3.13, 3.14 acres. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R2, R6, and C2. And land use plan would support commercial development in this area. The applicant, in addition to the request, he did provide additional information to you, it's on the right side of your packet, about his proposed development plans. This is all very, it's a concept plan, obviously, at this point, there's no, no site plans or anything, but it does give you an idea of his proposed development plans for the two tracks together, a mix of automobile sales as well as automobile repair uses, utilizing, there is a house and barn on the one track that he would utilize, the other one is, is a vacant track. So, that is, that's his proposal. Again, I think most everyone here is aware, just to clarify though, you're not approving his plan, you're just approving the zoning. Obviously, if he, if he is successful in his zoning and he, he does develop the property, I'm sure it would be something similar to that, but this isn't a PUD. You're not, you're not approving a specific development plan, you're approving a zoning of C5. So, we did receive some calls from the senior housing behind there, some folks who live in that area, who had concerns about automobile repair that close to their, where they live. So, from a, I think it was a noise concern primarily, so, but that's what I have.
I received some calls on this as well, and I had no calls personally that were in favor of this rezone, and so, I want to put it out to the planning commission for discussion just to see if they've talked to anybody or heard from anybody at all, and get your opinions on this. Anyone?
The reason for the C5, Kevin, is because of the automotive repair is not allowed in C2, correct?
Right, yeah. Yeah, C5, there's four different categories of uses. There are allowed in C5, there are not allowed in C2. Automotive, or just vehicular sales in general is one of those, various types, whether it's cars, or boats, or motorcycles, or whatever. Various automotive repair type uses, as well as wholesale sales, and a limited manufacturing is also allowed in C5, and it's not allowed in C2.
And you, I see it goes with the land use plan, but this is sort of a new zone for us. We've, how long have we had this, about six months, five, six months?
Roughly, yeah.
We've kind of put this in place for this very concept, so we can separate out what types of businesses can be proposed to be put in different areas. I don't know that I see any of the, of course, it's sort of a new zone, but I, I just don't see the, personally don't see the fit. I mean, I don't see anything around there that is car lot, car repair. I know that over across the Old Nashville Highway, I think there is a, not the Old Nashville Highway, but Amerville, I think there's a Napa Car Repair Center or something over there.
There is a parts store, and there is, if you go towards Murfreesboro...
It's a parts store though, right? It's not a repair center.
That one is. There is a repair business of some type, I can't remember exactly what it is. If you go down Old Nashville Highway toward Murfreesboro on the left...
Near Stewart'sboro.
Yeah, near Stewart'sboro, and then there's one on Hazelwood, kind of just north of the gas station there, there's a sales business, sales and repair. So, those are probably the two closest to this site.
Well, this is just a rezone request, as Kevin mentioned, but I think if we're either for or against this, we are, essentially, we're approving him for that type of business, and just be aware of that.
Well, yeah, for, well, there's, like I said, there's four categories, it could be of uses that are allowed in C5 that are not C2, so it could be any of those, or it could be something that's allowed in C2 as well, could, could be developed there, sure.
Well, in the callers that I had, I can tell you this, with each one of them, I did share with them that this is currently zoned C2, which, you know, a number of things can come in there zoned C2. I mean, you go down San Rudy Parkway, and you'll see what a lot of C2 looks like, but their concern was the usage, I think, and I've told them that it can be a number of things because of the way it's zoned, so... What's the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? So, all in favor of denying the request for rezon, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion's denied. All right, moving on to number two, Howard Spain, 409, 413, 415, Enin Springs Road East, a rezone request from PNO1 to C4.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request for three separate tracts of land, each about a third of an acre, so collectively a little over an acre of property. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R2, C2, C4, and PNO1. Land use plan would support a mix of office, retail, multifamily in this area, which is kind of how it's, it's developed. So, this, we did a few months ago, there was a, one tract of land was rezoned C4. This basically be on, on either side of that tract is where this is, where the request is, so, and I, we haven't really received any calls on this request, either in our for or against.
We're starting to see this sort of return from what we did years and years ago. I think we, didn't we make those PNO at one time, all of them along through there?
All at one time, all those houses at one time, yeah.
And the usage just wasn't giving them enough ability, I think, to do what they can do with a C4 zone, which is a softer commercial zone, professional offices, that type of thing, and I think that's what their mindset is. Questions or comments? Quite much tonight. That's saying something about Ed and Tim, isn't it?
All right. Kevin, what are some of the uses on C4?
Well, C4 is a...
Different than the PNO?
The lot size has some variance on that, doesn't it?
Well, the lot sizes are similar, the, the main, I guess, difference, PNO1 especially is a pretty limited, to pretty much just the professional and office type uses. C4 allows those uses, but also will allow, you know, a smaller retail business, you know, dry cleaners, or a hair salon, or something like that could go in C4. It wouldn't allow any kind of like fast food re, you know, restaurants, or anything like that, that's a little more intense, convenience stores, gas stations, type of stuff, would not be allowed in C4. It would be a little more intense from a traffic standpoint and a neighborhood impact standpoint.
I know the houses that are there, there's very little driveway, there's very limited parking, and I don't think you can get around behind the house on, a couple of them to even have additional parking, would they even be able to go C4 and have enough parking there to get somebody in and out?
Yeah, that's something we typically would look at on a site plan. The other thing that could happen is you could have two or three bought and kind of houses to get torn down and get redeveloped together. We've seen that some, some of the C2 zoning, we've, where homes were zoned C2 on Alamo Road and all, so that could happen. Yeah, the, the use, whatever the zoning is, that they have to be able to park for the use. So, if all they can really get on there is enough for a, you know, an attorney's office or something like that, that's all they could really build. They couldn't put a retail business that they couldn't park it, so...
Examples, the, over there across Maryview Heights, you know, where some of those have developed into air salons and things like that.
Right. Yeah, those were, I think those were all PNO at one time, and then changed to C4 later.
Yeah. And Mike's right, though, there's, that's a pretty busy little road right there, so ingress and egress is an issue, but I think we...
My concern would somebody be pulling in there and ha, have to back out onto Enin Springs, but if it would have to come back, site, site plan...
Yeah, we'd have to have a site plan, they would have to somehow work that out.
Before they were able to occupy.
Where they, yeah, you could, you would have to have, you couldn't ba, be forced to, folks to back out on the road. Yeah, they'd have to work out parking to where that could, they could pull out directly on the road, not back out.
It's a good question, though.
Someone kept the house and just remodeled it and came in for a business license? Would we still, could we still hold them to that, not back out on the street?
Yeah, they would have to, yeah.
You'd need a site plan.
Yeah, if it's, unless they keep the residential use, yeah, I mean, but if they, if they come in for a business of some type, we have to confirm that the...
They've got to come back before us.
That the use is allowed, they would have to do a site plan.
Okay.
A lot of times, if it...
That's the main thing.
Yeah, they, it may just be something that staff reviews, when it's converting an existing building to a different use, a lot of times, those are just staff review only, not a, not necessarily have to come back to this.
But it would throw up a flag for somebody to look at the, how to get in and out. That's my, I think Mike's concern and mine are the same. As long as we know that somewhere along the way, even if they just remodeled the inside, they would eventually have to get a business license, which would throw up a flag for somebody to look, make sure they don't, they're not backing out on this.
Right, and that they meet the parking requirements and all that, right.
Okay.
Generally, we turn arounds and things are having, you know, we, we look for that, parking pads and things of that nature. Any other questions? That's a good one.
Are, do you know if the three are currently occupied?
They are.
I believe they are.
One of, one of them just sold.
I, I know, there's cars there, about, CP.
One of them was just auctioned last week, so, but there's cars at the other three.
And we've changed, how many of these have we already changed?
Well, all of them from the apartments back to Brookhaven, were zoned PNO all at one time. I think this is, we had the one that's shown as C4, is the only one that's actually been zoned C4.
They came in and requested, yeah.
Right, he did.
Right. All right, any other questions or comments? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, need a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I guess that's with staff comments, right?
Yes.
No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion carries. Moving to sketch plats, Woodcrest Hills, sections one and two.
Yeah, this is a sketch plat. This is from property that was annexed into the town a couple of months ago. It's kind of west of the Woodmont Development, north of Woodcrest and Buckingham Hills Development. The access would be through those developments currently. This is when we, when you all looked at it, we required them to, beyond this section, they would have to look at another roadway access to Rock Springs Road. So, this is kind of the, that section that has been annexed and approved from an annexation standpoint. It's about 17.35 acres, 45 lots proposed, it is zoned R3. They're, the, they have actually proposed a name change, we'd asked them to look at it, just, there's a lot of Woodcrests and Woodmonts and all that out there, so they, they did change the road name. This is act, or not the road name, the property development name, they had showed it as Black Walnut Woods, they're actually changing that to either just Walnut Woods or Walnut Hills. So, it will change, which is not a big deal, just a name change, but that would, they kind of addressed our comment number one. Comments two and three, and really six and seven are really kind of standard-type comments that they could address down the road. Comment four regarding the pressure-reducing valve on the water line at Rock Springs Road has been addressed, and number five, they did correctly show that temporary turnaround, so that's been addressed, so we look at two, three, six, and seven would be the comments that would, would still need to, to remain. The access would be off of, so the road name called Q Garden Lane, which is through the Buckingham Hills Development, which is, I think they're just now kind of getting started on that, so this is, and they're looking at three different sections with this, with the first section providing the access to the other two. But everything else is in order.
This is the parcel, as I recall, that we, we looked at for future growth, and is this the one that we talked about when it hits Rock Springs?
That any future section is beyond this one right here would have to provide access to, to Rock Springs, yeah.
That's what I thought.
With another bridge.
Questions for Kevin?
How's the, I know you read the streets on how they would get to this section? Do you have it on a drawing or something you could point it out?
You can kind of see it if you look at their location map...
Mm-hmm.
A little bit, you have the existing kind of Woodmont Development there, but basically, they'll have to come down Montgomery Way, I think, and then the road is, where's the road? It's kind of connects all, kind of Buckingham and Woodcrest and Woodmont all together, kind of east-west, Napa Valley Drive, I believe.
So, they're going to have to go all the way south and then turn all the way, go west, and then come all the way back up again?
Yes. Or goes, come north from Lee Road up Montgomery Way, or within the Buckingham Place Development that connects to Lee Road as well now.
Also, I have a question. If you look at their sketch plat, number eight, it says water is being provided by Consolidated, but down here at the bottom, bottom of the page, it says water is provided by City, Town of Smyrna.
Yeah, it is by the Town of Smyrna, like, note number eight under the sketch plat using, I'm sorry. Here's, I missed it now. Yeah, it is provided by the town, not CUD. This, south of this is provided by CUD, so this is, this was actually on the board.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments.
And do we have a second?
Second.
So, the motion is second. Further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Uh.
Three, one. Trey's opposed. Motion carries. Preliminary plats, patent retreat phase two.
All right, patent retreat, phase two. This is one that had been approved over a year ago now, so its approval did expire, and this also includes something that we discussed on the final plat for sex, or for phase one, which was the connection over to Old Nashville Highway, when the connection to Chicken Pike didn't work out. So, this, this also, this is the first time you've really seen this completely all, all together. It's 108 lots, 49.15 acres, in an R3 zone. Again, access would be through the first phase of patent retreat, as well as, there's a connection to Burton Farms, as well as the roadway, new roadway connection to Old Nashville Highway. We had several standard comments, several of those were from CUD, because this is in CUD's water area, so we would need to keep those nying. The three comments under staff comments was first regarding showing the fire hydrants, they have addressed that, and they, it does meet our requirements. Number two, the original plans they submitted showed the improvements, there was a traffic study done, and they, they did show the improvements to Old Nashville Highway, that the traffic study also recommended that the, the road, patent retreat drive, that connection would also have, would be a left and a right turn coming out, and so, they hadn't shown that on the, the original submittment, but they have shown that now, so that has been addressed. And then, number three, regarding the 911 approval for the, to the street names, we have received that now, so they have addressed all those comments. So, all that we would have would be the nying standard comments is all that we would have left.
I noticed on the tax map here, it looks like they haven't acquired that access over the Old Nashville Highway yet, or do you know if they have?
I believe, yeah, they have.
Yeah, okay.
They're, they're not showing any other road improvements other than tying into Old Nashville, right?
Right, there's a left turn lane, and a right turn decelerate lane on Old Nashville Highway, and then the, the left and right coming out.
Okay, because it's just a short way, just right there at Chicken Pike, it goes back to four lanes anyway.
Right.
I think that's something we wanted there at the Old Nashville Highway.
It'd be nice to have it four all the way past that.
Sort of hill, yeah.
Yeah, and I think... Yeah, and I think, uh, Old Nashville Highway is actually a county road at that point, I think that they worked through that with the county highway department, county, the county engineering department as well.
They do have a, is it Brooklyn Faith Way that ties in the corner?
That's correct, yes.
That puts you a little further up on Nashville Highway as well.
Yeah, there's, there's really four, within this development, overall development, there's the connection to Old Nashville Highway, and then three other connections. Two to Burton Farms and one to, to the corner there.
Kevin, my mistake, I was looking at the other intersection when I mentioned that a while ago.
Okay.
That's still owned by somebody different, am I correct? That's the reason I had the question. I was looking at the, I think we were thinking of a different parcel.
Yeah, and there is, there is, uh, the road at Wood Dead End into a part track that could very easily, with one purchase, could extend that over.
Have another access.
Is that over there by the detention pond?
Right here. I was looking at this one, Kevin was talking about.
The original is going to go down to Chicken Pike, right?
Still does.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no roundabout.
In phase one, there was going to be a connection to Chicken Pike with the roundabout, but that's, they weren't able to acquire that property, so.
Roundabout went away.
Roundabout went away, and they did this, as an alternative, they had the connection to Old Nashville Highway directly.
All right, any other comments or questions? If not, I need a motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion with staff comments, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And carries. Moving on to preliminary plats, uh, patent retreat phase two, we just looked at this.
I just, yeah, it's the site plan.
So moving on to, uh, site plans, sorry I skipped my check off. Site plans for Cherry Creek Apartments.
Yeah, Cherry Creek Apartments, it's a piece of property, proposal is for a hundred and eighty apartments, fourteen point six one acres on Noah Lane. It is currently zoned R six, um, so it is consistent with the use, or the zoning for the site. The, uh, we have, they are meeting all the parking requirements, uh, they have a hundred and eighty units, they have three hundred and sixty-three spaces, I believe. This, this is a little bit lower density than what, the max allowed would be two hundred and twelve, so it is a little bit below. They do have some floodplain to have them to work around. They're, they're exceeding the handicap parking requirements. They, from a landscaping plan, they do meet our site plan or our designer view requirements. They also are meeting the buffer requirements where they're, they do a bu, commercial, uh, property on one side and some single family on the other, and they are meeting those buffer requirements as well. Architectural requirements, they're, they're proposing a mix of brick and, and hardy siding. Uh, we have color elevations, which are shown on the screen, and we have them here if you want to see those. We also have the, the black and whites in front of you. They are three-story apartment units. Part of this property is within the floodplain, uh, however, they are avoiding that entirely with their development plan, from a, as far as any buildings. And this land use plan does, uh, show the site as suitable for office, retail, multifamily mix, so they are consistent with our land use plan. Uh, we had, uh, four standard comments, which would be, need to remain. Uh, the six grading plan comments, they, they may have addressed those, uh, I don't believe Tom was able to review those, the revised plans that came in, so we want to keep those for now, but they may have all been addressed. To have to defer to him on those. Under the, uh, staff comments, number one has been addressed, um, and, and so it addressed as far as the amenity package requirements. Uh, number two, they've added a note to the plans, we would need to keep that regarding concurrence from T V A, is there is an easement crossing this property. Uh, number three, um, they did, addressed partially, they did not show the total area of landscape provided, so they do need to still show that. And number four would need to remain, that's really just for purposes of addressing this, uh, site for us, we need the layout for the apartment unit numbers and all. So, um, that's all that I have.
Since they're not building anything in the floodplain, there's no reason to be doing any cutting or filling there.
Right.
Right, so our storm, storm water would be controlled in a manner that does not dump any, anything on the residence and behind these properties, correct?
Right, they're showing actually kind of a series of, if you look on page three, there's actually three, kind of three separate ponds. The detention ponds that are kind of, would be, uh, where the, the, the storm water would be maintained in, in that area, so.
The ponds are actually inside that water, inside the hundred-year line.
They are in the hundred-year floodplain, right, so they can't, the detention, they have to have enough capacity for the storm water that, that is being generated. So that's what they're showing, but, you know, that's, I can't remember, yeah, that was one of, one of, uh, Tom's comments regarding floodplain. You know, the cut and fill within the floodplain and all that, so he still needs to review all that, but. That is, as far as my detention standpoint, they are proposing detention to meet our requirements.
If that creek gets up and fills these ponds up, where's the water going to go?
To be honest with you, that's, I would have to defer to either Mr. Steele or, or Tom, and Tom wasn't able to be here tonight, so I can't, so they might have to address that. Steve is here, I believe.
Yeah.
If you want to ask him about that.
Because I know the, the floodline's right against the back of the, uh, buildings there.
Right, it's right along the back of, with those three buildings, yeah, and then also with the two on the other side too.
Mr. Steele, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. What we do there, Mike, is, uh, we do a couple of things. One, we do compensating cuts and fills, so where we have a pond in the floodplain, we have made compensating cuts out in other parts of the floodplain so that that's balanced, so that we're not increasing, uh, or decreasing rather, the flood carrying ability of the floodplain. Uh, and Tom makes us, when we do that, he looks at the pond as if it's full with dirt, I guess you would say, so it's, we don't really count that. Uh, we have to take that into account in our calculations, so, um, I think the other thing, I don't know that we design the stormwater facilities for the one hundred-year storm in Smyrna, I think it's twenty-five.
Correct.
Year storm, and then we have to, like with our pond, we have to be able to pass the fifty-year storm. But when you get to the hundred-year storm on a creek, of course, the floodplain is full of water, and that's why we have to elevate the buildings and the parking lots above that. So it's taken into account, but it, it's a little complicated to try to explain.
And if I'm not mistaken, of course, you do this more than I do, but FEMA would have to approve any kind of cut and fill that you did, correct? Or would they?
It depends, uh, we're not in the floodway, if we were doing any work in the floodway, and what that is, that's the area immediately in the creek and in an area beside the creek, that's needed to keep the flood elevation from increasing if you squeeze, squeezed in on both sides. So you can squeeze both sides, but at some point it begins to rise. So that's why our development is basically the, the, we have kept the buildings and the parking, everything outside the floodplain. The only thing that's in the floodplain are our detention ponds, and we have done compensating cuts down in that floodplain also to take that into account, so that we're not reducing that storage volume.
Or, or creating a problem where you're pushing it on the neighbors behind that on the other side of the creek?
Well, yeah, I mean.
Unless they already have it, correct?
Right, right.
Yeah, some of them, they already have some floodplain in their properties.
That, that should, you know, water, my analogy is water's like electricity, it follows the path of least resistance. As the water starts to fill up in the creek and everything's running toward it, you know, it's trying to go downhill, it's not like the water on our side of creek would cross to the other side of the creek. That just doesn't physically happen, everything's building and starting to pass downstream. If you had a restriction downstream, then it could all back up until it over tops.
So I guess my point is that if the property already has floodplain, this won't take it away.
No, sir.
It'll, it'll continue to have their floodplain, to the degree that it's, currently does. Any other questions for Mr. Steele? Kevin, we, uh, this, this was already zoned R six, as I recall, correct?
Yes.
This is, okay, so.
It's been R six for.
They don't need a rezone to do apartments or townhomes here, because it was already zoned for that, and it has been for a lot of years.
Long time.
Matter of fact, we've seen them bring these to us before.
This is.
I can recall at least three other times, yeah.
That they've had the site plan in front of them.
It never did move forward, but at some point it probably will. Fourteen and a half, is it fourteen and a half units per acre?
Right, I think max density is like two hundred and twelve, and they're proposing one eighty.
Yeah, so it's a softer, because of the floodplain, most likely, so. Yeah, there's a, there's times we hear about apartments being built in town, and there's really, when it's already zoned, there's not much we have control over to change. I mean, they've already got the zoning here, and it's been there forever, so they're just using their zoning for what it was, uh, permitted four years ago. Questions or comments? For Kevin or Mr. Steele, anybody? It's going to come pretty close to the commercial development up there on, on Nashville Highway, kind of right behind it, correct?
Correct, yeah.
It will be behind it, actually.
Yeah, it'll be directly, well, like, building B on the plan is, is directly behind that commercial building, yeah.
Yeah, no, no way across it right there. One of the ways they're probably getting their density here is by going three stories instead of doing multiple buildings.
Right.
It's a higher elevation. All right, any other questions or comments? If not, I need a motion.
Motion to approve, staff comments.
You have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
A second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? It carries. It's bait shop, Kevin, on Florence Road.
Yeah, this is a piece of property on Florence Road, uh, zoned C two. Proposed use is, is for a convenience store and other, you know, retail type uses, uh, which is certainly allowed in the C two district. This is property that was annexed and zoned C two, in the, just the recent past few months. Again, they are, uh, meeting the parking requirements, required would be sixty, and they're providing sixty. They are meeting our landscaping requirements per designer view, as well as architectural, they are, it's primarily a brick building, there was some, an accent of the Ephesus as well. Portion of this property does lie in the hundred-year floodplain, uh, but the development does lie, is outside of that area. And again, it's, it's, this is one that we zone C two, it is, the land use plan would call for, for medium density residential in this area, which most of this area is. This was an existing commercial use and a commercial, commercially zoned in the county, and so when we annexed it, we did keep the commercial zoning. We had, uh, three comments under our standard comments, which we would need to, uh, keep those, as well as four grading comments, that again, um, would have to defer to Tom on those. Uh, I don't know if he's had a chance to look at these or not, so we want to keep those. Uh, then we just had two comments left under staff comments, uh, one is to provide a high, fire hydrant within four hundred feet of all points of the building. The building is not sprinkled or six hundred feet if, if it is sprinkled, they have added a note to that effect on the plans. I don't know exactly how they're proposing to address that yet, so that's kind of, they've added the note, so I would want to keep that comment as a comment of, part of the approval. Just so they can, we'll let them know, obviously it's clear it's got to be addressed in one way or another. Uh, number two has been addressed regarding the grease trap, so that's, that's been taken care of. Again, it's a closed building with a, a gas canopy with some fuel pumps and, and the bait shop is going to be kind of rebuilt and redeveloped. There's an existing, uh, there are actually three buildings, I believe, that are going to be taken out, um, and then re, going back with, with this building. With, uh, I think four, potentially a four spaces of, that could be rented out for various, whatever, uses that are allowed in the C two zone, so. I guess that's all that I've got.
There's a, there's a current metal building on there now, if I remember right, are they going to leave it and attach to it or take it down, do you know?
Everything, if you look at the page two of the plan, has the existing condition sheet.
Right.
Those, there's an existing.
Block.
Existing store, the existing block building, and the mobile home, I'll, those, those will all be taken out.
Correct.
And then rebuilt with the, uh, eighty-four hundred square feet plus the canopy, I believe, is right.
Correct. It's getting the makeover. And they've got, uh, type of brick on all four sides, which is.
Right.
Good to see. All right, comments or questions? Motion from anyone?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
Motion need a second?
Second.
And a second from Mark, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It carries. Keystone Industrial Lot Nine on Huntley Industrial Drive, Kevin?
Yeah, this is a site plan on Huntley Industrial Drive and the, the, uh, Keystone Industrial Park over there. I think this is the last undeveloped lot in that development, other than, I think there's one left on the front. Uh, it's about one point oh six acres, uh, it's zoned I one. It's a thirteen thousand two hundred square feet, uh, building, as proposed. They meet, um, all our parking requirements, actually exceeded slightly. They also are meeting the, the landscaping requirements, uh, that are required under designer view and in, in industrial zone. Architecturally, uh, the building is a, a mix of brick and metal on the front, with metal on the sides and rear, uh, which does meet designer view when, for an industrial zone where it's not visible from a, an arterial street. Site's not located in a floodplain, uh, and this area is kind of proof kind of a mix of single family and the industrial development, which is kind of what's, this is kind of a bridge between the, the heavy industrial to the south and then residential in the, in the immediate area, on, on the north and east sides. We had really four comments under standard comments to, uh, that would need to remain, we had two under, our staff comments, uh, which are really kind of standard comments, really two regarding, they'll need to submit the water construction plans, because they are going to extend a fire hydrant. And, uh, we just recommended they contact Milton C Electric, there's a guy wire shown in the, uh, detention pond, and, uh, that they're represented from Milton C Electric indicated it would need to be, uh, mowed or something done there. So we, that's really kind of between them and Milton C Electric, but that's really more for their information, so. Again, this is one that's been before the planning commission a few times in the past too, so, uh, still a very similar plan to what had been approved in the past, so, from the, as far as the layout and everything, so.
It needs designer view and parking requirements and.
Correct.
Landscape requirements, so. It needs design review and parking requirements and landscape requirements, so. Industrial area. And it's towards the end of the Culpa Sacs, it's not.
Yeah, that's very, towards the back, yeah.
All right, any questions or comments for Kevin? Kevin, it's showing three doors, is it gonna be three separate spaces?
I don't know if they're gonna be, if it's potentially three separate spaces or not, I guess it could be. It's an office and primarily warehouse in type operation. We don't have a floor plan or anything, we just had the, you know, the exterior elevations.
Right.
So. I think the back just shows the multiple. But anyway, they had multiple dock doors in the back.
Yeah, they got three in the back, three, I would say they're probably gonna try and split it into three. But even if they did, the, the parking requirement wouldn't change.
Would be the same.
It would be the same, so.
Did we get a motion? If, if they broke it into three, would the handicap change?
No, it's based on square footage.
It's based on a square footage and also how many spaces are in the parking lot, not necessarily how many uses.
Motion to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve and a second.
Second.
A second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Take care. Rock Springs Plaza Phase Two on Rock Springs Road, Kevin?
Yeah, this is Phase Two of a existing development that's already under construction, under development there on Rock Springs, kind of between Rock Springs and Cedar Grove and Jim Parker Drive, has frontage on, on three roads. This is one that was actually approved a little over a year ago and, and did expire. So it is a different plan, uh, than what was approved, slightly different, uh, partially. The, uh, the square footage of the two, kind of the retail restaurant and the larger retail building changed slightly. They went down just a little bit. The, the big, bigger changes, the, uh, the gas station, convenience store building actually got larger. So that's kind of what is different about it from what you looked at, uh, a little over a year ago. Still essentially the same layout. They do meet, um, our landscaping requirements and our, our parking requirements, um, for the, the overall site. The, um, does that, from a design review, the, the convenience store shows a primary material, brick and stone. The other two buildings have brick and EFS and stone as well, uh, not as much brick as the convenience store, but it's all is meeting design review, and it does, is consistent with what was discussed regarding the rear of the one retail building at the, when it was looked at before. Right, so it is, they did change that based on the approval, and it's, it's still consistent with what was approved before. Site is not located within the hundred-year floodplain, and it is consistent with our conference of plan. Uh, we basically had three standard comments and then one staff comment that those four would, uh, need to remain. And other than that, everything is in order.
With this proposed new use, are we still okay on our, uh, it looks like we probably are, but are we still okay on turn lanes off of Rock Springs and?
Yes.
Well, a recent traffic study kind of indicated that was getting to be a pretty congested area.
Right, and they are, they, we did, they are making improvements to see, to, uh, Jim Parker there.
Right.
With, as a part of this development with the, the gas station. So, yeah, it is, we did, we did have the traffic, we asked for, and they did do a traffic study, and they are, the improvement's shown are consistent with what was required as part of that study.
Questions or comments? Some of us came up in the past, and we did talk about the backside of the building that was not fronting Jim Parker, but visible from Jim Parker.
Right.
And, uh, they did agree to dress that up for us, so. All right, need a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Need a second?
Second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion carries. Rock Springs Town Homes, three fifty to three ninety-two Rock Springs Road, Kevin?
Yeah, this is a, a site that, um, we kind of looked at briefly last month, but it was withdrawn and, and it did resubmit. It's about twenty-two townhomes proposed and one point seven acres. It is zoned R six, um, so this, the use is consistent with the zoning. Access would be from, there's a, the public road of Imperial Boulevard on the one side, and then from a, the driveway that goes back to the Colony Square Apartments will be on the other. The, uh, the landscaping plan does meet design review. The parking is shown at forty-four spaces, which is the, does meet our parking requirements as well, the handicap spaces. Then from an architectural standpoint, um, the front elevations are brick with upper levels, hardy plank and, and hardy shingle. The both sides and rear are all hardy plank, proposed. The inside, the entire side is within the hundred-year floodplain. And our conplan actually recommends commercial development on this property, though it has been going for this, this use for many years. We had five standard comments, which we would need to keep all those. They have addressed several of the staff comments. Either they've, are shown now on the plans, or they have submitted things to either our Public Works Department or to the Utilities Department, and so they still are kind of going through some review processes with several of those comments. So I'll kind of try to go through those. They have, uh, addressed comment number one. Comment number, sorry, comment number two. It appears, it's kind of hard to tell from the plan, but it appears like the, there, there are still, I think they have attempted to address that, but some of the, uh, the, it does look like that some of the, the trash vehicles may have to leave the paved surface area, so a little difficult to tell on that one. We have received a letter on, from the adjoining property owner to utilize the driveway. They have a kind of agreed, kind of, and it's be a letter on that. We will, if this is, is approved, there will have to be further documentation of that, as well as an easement recorded and that sort of thing to, to provide that access.
Is that the Colony Square group?
That is the Colony Square ownership, and we do have that, it's kind of an email, but, um, they have, we do have something from them where they have agreed to, to that. We'll have to go through the further approvals or further recording of documentation on that. Elevations, the architectural elevations, we do have, I think we got three, we asked for ten, I think we only got three, but we do have those up there, I think, and a couple spots for you guys to look at. Six and seven, those utility easements have been shown now. Comment number eight, they are working with our Utilities Department on that one, so. That's regarding the water main outside the vehicular use area. I don't think they're gonna be able to meet that, but I think they have, my understanding is they've shown it kind of where the utilities asked for it, but they're still working, I would want to keep that comment just for, so they can work through that with our utilities. They did show the existing gas main across the street that has been shown. Ten through thirteen are all things that either Utilities or, uh, Public Works will need to, things have been submitted to them and they need to review them. So, um, we would want to keep those comments so they can, again, they've been submitted, but they haven't been reviewed yet because sometimes, some cases they were just received, um, today, so. And then comment number fourteen, those two issues have been addressed. We, uh, because we've discussed this site several times, so, um, I think the, the primary, I guess, concern that I have, would have, from a staff standpoint, I think it's, um, it's just because it is entirely in the hundred-year floodplain, they are proposing cut and fill, um, to address that. And so as part of that, it also includes a, an elevated drive aisle. You know, we talked, I think Mr. Rose was here last month, talked about the kids could play kickball underneath there. So that structural, all that still has to be reviewed and, and, um, obviously it's an elevated, uh, it's hard to tell exactly from this, the, the, if there is a kind of a cross flash, cross section of it on this sheet C three point O. It's a fairly elevated area there, so. I guess that's kind of the main concern, and I did, Mr. Danport's not here, he did kind of share with me when he called and said he couldn't be here, that that was kind of his concern, I guess, too, uh, from a safety standpoint, more than anything, I think, so.
What would be the recommendation if it were permitted, anything additional?
Well, I mean, they have, they have, I don't know if there's anything additional recommend, I mean, they have to meet those requirements. They've got to meet FEMA's requirements from a cut and fill standpoint.
Parking level would have to be elevated as well, correct? It couldn't be left in the floodplain, parking lot?
Well, you, I mean, that's, obviously that's the recommendation, that you, it would be elevated, and they are, that is why it's elevated, it's.
They actually made a comment to.
Yeah, so, but yeah, they don't have to be elevated as high as the floor elevation of the residential structures do. They have to be at least three feet above. The parking area does, I think, can be, I think we typically would like to see, like on a garage, on a house, we typically would want to see at least one foot above, not, you know, the living area, three feet above. And typically you want to see the, the parking areas at least at or above, not necessarily three feet above or one foot above, but at least above the flood, hundred-year floodplain, so that the cars aren't getting flooded. Obviously, if someone's in a flooded situation, we don't, they have to get out somehow, so. But when they are, they're, the houses are all actually a little bit above, three feet above the hundred-year flood, for the finished floor, so.
It's a pretty challenging piece of property, it has been for a long, long time. It's got the railroad track that kind of borders it, some easements and so forth that run alongside of it. I think the biggest concern I would have, and I, I think it's already been voiced, is the elevation of the road, the drive coming in and out and so forth, and the floodplain that they'd have to cut and fill. If this were to move forward in some degree, we could certainly, and it sounds like we already have, we can make that a, a comment, that it'd have to be approved by you guys and staff to feel comfortable with it, right?
Right, I mean, the, from a structural standpoint, obviously there's gonna be multiple columns holding up this elevated drive aisle, and that drive aisle's gotta be strong enough to hold up a trash truck or whatever. So, I mean, there's obviously a lot of structural design that has to go into that. The parking spaces themselves and the buildings are on, will be on ground, or will be on cut, really fill material.
It's ingress and egress.
But the ingress and egress, the drive aisle itself is elevated, uh, several feet off the ground, again, I don't know exactly.
This is what Tom asked for, structure, so we did provide that to him?
Yeah. So, I mean, you have a column every ten feet according to this, you have the retaining wall, you know.
The concrete column?
Yeah, and you have the retaining wall, basically, basically underneath where the parking spaces are, basically all that area, again, that's where the fill area would be. So you'd have the retaining wall there, and then you have a clear space underneath for the majority of the drive aisle, or at least maybe half of the drive aisle, I guess, not the entire drive aisle.
You said Tom's got some concerns from a safety perspective?
Well, that was, that's actually Mr. Danport.
Okay.
When he called, he, he was, I think, just from a, you know, children in that side or whatever, he was concerned.
Kevin, can you? Never mind, I just found, thank you, never mind.
I like the way the play area is on the backside of the retaining wall.
Right, but it's on the back.
I don't know how you're gonna control that.
Behind the building, right, that's, yeah, you can't, obviously you can put it there, but you can't keep them there necessarily. Up to the parents to do that.
Just about anything you were to put in here is gonna be a challenge, anything. Yes, sir, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to address one.
Name and address.
This is Chet Rhodes with Rhodes Engineering, a designer, they, staff required that we keep the parking above the twenty-five-year flood level where the cars park, and we've actually kept it above the hundred. So we exceeded what they asked us to do in regard to your concern about the parking, and, and the drive aisle is also above the twenty-five-year, so we're keeping them high and dry there, and I just wanted to answer that question you had.
Appreciate that, thank you. Any other body questions or comments? Kevin, you, you had a concern, of course, it's in our staff comments too, about the trash pickup. I know the dumpster's on the, kind of the back corner of this property there, but I don't see any kind of access to it.
Well, the access would, it would kind of be on, they really come from either side. I think I made a concern, we just want to be sure they can stay on paved surface.
Right.
You know, um, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty tight, right, and I think, I think it's shown where it is meeting that. It's a little tight right there, I think, I think it's.
We need a sheet to address just that, in and out to the garbage, and it's C two point one in the plans, and it shows how a truck would turn and can get around, uh, to pick that up and get out. We also included concrete pavement in front of that pad, so that the heavy-duty trucks wouldn't bust up the pavement.
Uh, Kevin, has anybody talked to fire department? Just out of curiosity, turn ratios and weight and that kind of thing?
I can't remember, they haven't been to last couple staff reviews, I'm not sure.
Has that been addressed?
We addressed that by the drive aisle, at first we only had a drive-through one side, and it dead-ended, but we addressed the fire drive-through issue by having access to both Imperial and then getting the consent from Colony House Apartments and their attorneys in, in Knoxville. So now trucks, you know, they have straight access all the way through right in front. So it's really a lot better access for fire truck than we had with the one entrance we started with, so, that's how we addressed that.
And there's a hydrant on either end, from that standpoint, I think your concern is something about the weight of.
Yeah, well, you talked about even the trash trucks.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, the, the structural design.
It has to meet that.
Will have to meet the weight load requirements, right, of whatever, whatever, you know, we, we think is necessary from a fire truck or from a, you know, the, the trash truck, a school bus potentially, you know, whatever.
Tank.
Don't ask a lot, I want y'all to just see this, this is Tom has this.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna let you do it one more time, I'm gonna ask you to let us conduct our meeting, okay?
This is your structure, you keep asking about it, Tom has it.
We're gonna let Tom be the structural engineer, but I appreciate the information, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with comments, uh, need a second. Going once, need a second, anybody? Sounds like we don't have a second, counselor, so would that die for the lack of emotion, a second? Okay. All right, so that motion is dead and does not.
We need to do something.
We have to deny it or?
Well, we have to put something in there, affirmative.
Deny it or?
Deny or defer.
Or defer, yeah. So I need a new motion of some kind, since we don't have a motion to approve. So I need a new motion of some kind, since we don't have a motion to approve. We gotta do something.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
If you just put based on, bring your motion to deny.
I have major concerns for the.
Structure.
Struck, well, it's not the structure, you can, you can design it to meet cars, tanks, whatever you want, I just have major concerns, I can see somebody backing through a rail, ending up in the detention pond. And, and I may be over cautious, but it's, I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with it.
So there's your motion and a reason, now we need a second.
Second.
A second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor to deny, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
Aye.
One, okay. Motion fails. Uh, motion's approved to deny.
Motion carries.
Looks like we're at the bond reviews.
That's correct. All right, um, got several this month. First one, uh, Burden Farms, uh, section five, phase one, this is one we've had for several years. We had, uh, really only five items, we did have the as built, we really only had the five items. And they have addressed all those except number four. What we, with number four, um, uh, we have, uh, our Public Works inspector actually has talked with and has a letter, he says from, uh, from the adjoining developer, which is, uh, the one we just looked at last night, this, tonight, patent retreat. And actually that developer, there's a small, it's actually not about sixty feet, it's actually about thirty to thirty-five feet of roadway, they're gonna construct that as part of the patent retreat development. Um, and they've kinda committed to do that, so, um, everything else has been done since, since this report was put together, they've completed all the other issues. And I have talked with Mr. Waldron, since he called me after the packet was all put together, and, um, they, they wanna get everything finished, 'cause they, they've had it long enough. This is the end of the maintenance period, and so they would have requested it, that it be done, be released.
Excuse me, say, which one are you on?
Burden Farms, section five, phase one. I, I guess I would like, I, I'm okay with, with releasing it with the idea, if I can get a copy and, of, of the letter, the commitment on, 'cause obviously there's a piece of the roadway that's not been finished there, that does need to be finished. If they've worked something out, with Mr. Hollings said, that they, he's gonna build it as part of that thing, I'm completely fine with that, I just wanna, I would like to have a copy of what.
But you're saying one, two, three, five, and six have been addressed?
Yes.
And you're.
It's just.
You have a verbal from Mr. Waldron, and if you get a something in writing, you're okay releasing it?
Well, I believe, I, I believe I have something, I think Public Works has something in writing, I think I would just like to have a copy of that from my file, nothing else.
I'm saying, you want it, you'd like to see it.
Right. So, and I'm perfectly fine if we can get that, of releasing that one, 'cause it has, we've had it for twelve years, uh, and they're done, but they're thinking it's with that little thirty foot section of road, so. So that's that one. Um, Woodcraft, section one, uh, we had three pretty minor things there. Again, that's the end of the, uh, maintenance period on this one, if they can address those three minor things, that would be, uh, but they have till the thirtieth of May. Be completely fine with just releasing that one. Buckingham Place, section one, um, we have a few items, or several items on that one, actually. That's one, we, we have had that two years now, I would recommend an extension on that one, I, I've recommended a year for y'all, six months is fine.
I have a question on the, on the last two, this one and the last one. Whose responsibility is it to maintain those detention ponds when the, when the builder is done?
It's, there's a homeowners association. If it's been turned over, I don't know if it's been turned over to the H O A yet, but ultimately it's the homeowner.
Whose responsibility is it for making the homeowners association do what they're supposed to do?
Uh, that would, Public Works, we have a stormwater department, would inspect those, and if they're not being maintained properly, they'll.
'Cause I, I know personally that those things aren't being maintained.
Okay.
Have they been turned over yet? Do we know?
I do not know.
Well, they may not have been turned over, but.
But that's a fair question.
The builder's not maintaining.
The builder and developer are responsible till it's turned over to the H O A.
Okay.
Okay, Hidden Hills, section four, phase three. They have, um.
Before we do that, yeah.
Can we back up?
Yeah, let's.
Sure.
Buckingham Place.
Okay.
You said that this bond's been in place for two years. And you still have a long list, and you'd like to extend it one year.
That was my recommendation, if y'all wanna do short term.
Hold on, let me, let me get to my question.
Okay.
When do we cash the bond and fix it?
I'm sorry?
When do we cash the bond and take care of getting these items fixed, if you've been dealing with it for two years?
No, this is, I mean, that's when, that's when the bond was first put in place, I mean, it's, that's not unusual to have a two or three year period, uh, from that standpoint, so.
They're, they're not the building.
Yeah, the burden is the one we've had the longest time, of course, that, they went through the, the slowdown in oh eight, oh nine, ten with that one, but that, that's not unusual to have it that long, so.
So if he did not build any more lots and walked away, as long as he kept taking, paying the maintenance, paying the bond, we just hung?
No, I mean, at, at one point, at some point, yeah, absolutely, we, we've called bonds before, believe me, so, I mean, that's not.
Conversation a couple of years ago here, I think, with, with Ed, and, you know, we were trying to get a hold of some of the real, real slow developing work.
Three more lots.
And so we stepped that up, I think, and, and, uh.
Yeah, I mean, at some point.
We really don't wanna call a bond, we don't have to.
Yeah, we want them to finish the work.
Not enough to do the work.
Right.
Yeah, we want them to finish the work, I mean, that's our, ultimately our goal, and I think they will, I mean, it's.
I'm just saying, you got.
Too, they don't.
And this is me being a quasi-developer as well. You got place final toppings, we've got thirty-three homeowners that have been driving for some period between one, between one month and two years, driving straddling manholes. And I realize we have, they have to be built, and they have to develop, and we have to move along, but at some point, it becomes, I don't know what that point is. I guess is, is, is where I'm going.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from, and it, and, and we do, like I said, we always try to work with the developers, because it's better for them to finish, because it hurts their credit if we call their bond, I mean, so. We try to, as much as possible, work with folks to get things done, and not call their bond and the city hire somebody to do the work, so. Again, it's from a standpoint of two years, two years, that's not an unusual thing, it's usually three or four anyway. If things get slowed down like they did six, seven years ago, it becomes a lot longer than that.
Yeah, it's them for a while, then.
Yeah, so. I mean, if y'all are not comfortable with a year, do you wanna recommend?
It was a question for my benefit, 'cause I can see the guy walking away, not walking away, but he may have another subdivision that's a little hotter, and those three lots don't get built for a year. And we're here a year from now with three lots still.
Right.
And I was asking for my, um, I guess my own edification.
Sure. Okay. Uh, okay, Hidden Hills, four, phase three, uh, the topping has been put down on this one, there's some kinda cleanup items and, uh, from Utilities and Public Works both. I'm still do, need the as built on that one. Since they have done the topping, we have not had a maintenance period on this one yet, so would recommend reducing that, um, to ten, and extend it one year as the maintenance bond. And really the same recommendation for section four, phase four, again, the final topping has been recently put down there. Again, it's kinda the same recommendation there to reduce it and extend it to, for the one year maintenance period. Legacy resub of lot twenty, section four, um, that, that one has not had the final topping put down yet, I think that's all that's left. This is a commercial subdivision, there's only five lots, two have been built on, three have not. The developer has asked for an extension, um, because they are looking at the other three lots, and they would like to develop those three lots before they, uh, put the final topping down, so it doesn't get damaged. Their, their businesses are all that, they are the only users of that property, are the two businesses that they own, um, so that's, that was their point two on that. Typically, we like to see at least seventy-five percent built out, so, of course, this is only five lots, typically it's twenty or thirty or fifty lots or whatever. So they did request an extension, and I did, uh, recommend a one year extension on that one as well. And I guess that's all I got.
All right, need a motion on the bond review. I'd make it, but I can't.
Well, I, again, I'm trying to figure out how to word it. We're gonna approve the bond record, made bond report based on Kevin's comments.
Staff comments.
To prove as staff.
Because two of them were, are not per what's in the packet, the first one and the second one. Correct?
No, I, I rec, I would recommend, if, if they can keep, if they can take care of those three, yeah, items, I would recommend release, otherwise they would need to extend it.
That's what, so if you can get the information you want.
That letter of commitment, in his file, not Tom's file.
You're willing, you're, we're voting to allow you to look, and if you're comfortable, release them.
Those two, yes.
That's basically my motion.
On the first two, yes.
Counselor, you got that motion?
Thank you.
That's why I say I was struggling.
All right, we have a motion, need a second. We're gonna have to feed these guys or something. There we go, all right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Mindy, do you have anything?
No, sir, not tonight.
Nothing? We usually don't give you the floor for very long, I'd love for you to have an opportunity.
I'm gonna prepare a speech next time.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else?
I don't have anything else.
A speech?
No, sir.
Anybody up here? Uh, I do wanna ask, uh, Trey, real quick, yeah, if you would talk about Shannon, uh, and the fundraiser for that a little bit, if you can.
Many of us know Shannon Williams, been the drama teacher at Smyrna High for a lot of years. She's battling a very serious cancer issue, um, got a lot of people praying for. The school and a number of, there's a couple of businesses in the community, and my wife, and a couple of other ladies, there's, um, Shannon Strong bracelets, they're rubber bracelets out there, and the schools, they're asking for, not asking, it's five dollar donation, you're welcome to give whatever you feel. And, um, all the money goes to the Williamses. Pretty rough time.
Hard to live.
She's touched a lot of lives.
Yep.
So, and one other thing I had, I'll, we, uh, the school board is fixing to, has out for bid right now, the Rocky Fork Elementary. I know that we brought the drawings and everything through, but that building up there, we did not know what it looked like, so as a courtesy, I'll be bringing, well, I'll, we'll be requesting to bring it back next month for a cursory review, so that staff can see the building elevations, and we've shifted a road a little bit, and the engineers are working with the guys here, I don't think there's anything major, but.
Is that a twenty nineteen opening?
Yes.
So another, another school.
Another Hail Mary. Here, ready or not, here we come. We're gonna, we're gonna bring it back, just to let y'all see it again, so we'll bring that back next month, but prayers for Shannon would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely, you know, you mentioned something, I'll just touch on this, my daughter went to Smyrna High School and was a drama major at M T S U all because of Shannon Williams. And she ended up teaching drama, all, theater and drama, all because of Shannon, so I too wanna echo what, what, uh, Trey just said, and that's the reason we're wearing these, we hope everybody will go out and be supportive of Shannon and the family, and Matt, and the kids, they need it. I'll mention this probably in council meeting, but since we have an audience that watches, I would like to send our condolences over to Diane Waldron, uh, the loss of her son this past week, and, uh, spoken with her, and she's, she's doing pretty good, but I know that's gotta be hard, so prayers for Diane Waldron here at the city, she's a, a special person to all of us. So with that, we are adjourned, thank you.